Thank you, Mr. Chair and rest of the select board. First thing on our agenda today is the 40B, which we have received some official notification from the state regarding an application that was received by them for a project at what's known as Emerson Field, behind the Emerson Center in the downtown by the Common. And last week, the potential developer and members of the church had an informational session that lasted, say, ninety minutes. We had about seventy-five residents and others participate and attendants of that meeting. A lot of good information shared, a lot of communication provided. There is, though, now that we've received the notification, initially, we were told that it would be a two to three month period from the time they submitted the application to the state that we'd receive this letter. It actually took them two business days to send the letter to us. So it's moved very quickly on their end. One of the things that's in there is a potential response from the town that they're looking for, which will then set up likely an onsite meeting with the state to discuss the potential projects, and they'll take the feedback. I've spoken with the chair of the planning board, who has reviewed this information as well, Martha Morrison. Her and I discussed possibly, if it's the purview of the board, recommending that they look at this information, provide guidance, select board as of the next steps and appropriateness of the application as presented, or things that should be pointed out to the state during any subsequent conversations around the project. That is one option that we have, but the intent is that we will need to provide some response to the state now that we've received the notification. So, purpose of the work session today, this is one of the items to sort of discuss the project as in the big picture if we'd like, but more specifically, come up with the game plan over the next twenty-something days when the response is due.
Okay, have people had an opportunity to look at the documents here?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, I've looked at them, but I haven't read them in detail. I can forego that if we need to vote on it tonight.
Well, I don't think we're voting on anything. We're just discussing and I guess strategizing what our response may or may not be. Lynn, it looked like you were about to say something.
I was just going to say that what Kevin discussed with Martha, I think, is a good approach. In the past, anytime an application has come in for a 40B, it has gone to the planning board and they have coordinated obtaining responses from all pertinent departments to give feedback. And I think that would be a good approach to take, even though I know this is a kind of a modified and first step of an application. I think that would be a good approach.
Lynn, just so I'm clear, that's standard procedure, right? Like, the planning board would be the first step in this?
Yes, and Martha could speak to this better. I don't remember this preliminary step for the 40B over on Perkins. This threw me a little, because I initially thought this was the application, but it's a pre-application so that the state could say, yes, you checked certain boxes to be able to proceed to a full application. I didn't know that existed before, but I still think going through the planning board is the best way to go, because they're used to doing these, they know the areas they have to look at. I'd feel more comfortable having Martha and her team coordinate it.
Well, I agree. I think that's a perfect approach, and you're right, Lynn. I don't think we got that first step at fifty-seven Perkins Row. We didn't get that letter from Mass Housing to start out with fifty-seven Perkins Row. But I agree that, yeah, it belongs, at this stage, it belongs in the in the hands of the planning board, in my opinion.
One thing, too, I would just, when I was reading just the cover letter, maybe some clarification. This letter to you, Marshall, from Catherine Riedesohn, after of housing, it says, "The project will consist of forty-four total units. Forty-three will be restricted for rental for households earning less than sixty percent. The project will also contain eight rental units for households earning thirty percent or less." To me, that's eight plus forty-three is fifty-one, not forty-four.
I mean, to be fair, somebody who is earning thirty percent or less is also earning less than sixty percent. So I think the forty-three includes the eight, because again, that makes sense.
What's the extra one, then, from forty-three to forty-four?
That is their literal one market rate apartment that they talked about. They have one market rate apartment in this complex.
Okay, that's a little confusing, then.
It is. It's an odd way to write the sentence, but if you think about the math, again, if I'm earning thirty percent, I am also earning, you know, or less than thirty percent, then I'm definitely earning less than sixty percent. So that is, that sixty, that forty-three is inclusive of both those numbers. I don't know that anyone feels differently, other than at all, that we are comfortable with this, basically handing this off despite what this letter says to the planning board. I would echo everyone's point that they know what they're doing. I mean, we could find our way, but why do that when we have a group of people who've already found their way time and again, and in whom we have trust, so.
Marshall, I know you were there, and boy, I think you were there, and Lynn, you were there, Kevin, Raphael, I'm not sure if you were there last week. What was the, what was the sort of temperature of the room? Was it a Q and A? Was it a stand and deliver? How did it end? Can you just sort of give like a synopsis of it?
I would say it was all of those things. They certainly, both members of the church, as well as members of the company, that are developing or proposing to develop this land, had a prepared PowerPoint and then went into a Q and A. I don't know if, it probably went into a Q and A a little bit earlier than they were ready for it to, but that was the temperature of the room. Ultimately, I think they were there and mostly prepared to ask the questions that came their way. The reality is, it is very preliminary. I mean, there are a lot of steps between where we sit today and the possibility of them even putting a shovel in the ground, much less, you know, cutting the ribbon on this. So there were a lot of questions that people had that they couldn't necessarily answer. Some people also had questions for the church directly that really had nothing to do with the developers or the development, but more how did they get to that point? And I would say that the temperature varied a little bit, like a good New England spring does. There were moments when it got kind of steamy, and there were moments that it was very friendly and informative, and there were probably moments in between all of those. So I know that that's probably a bit of a vague answer.
Oh, no, 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 it's great. I mean, in reality, this town is faced with fifty-seven Perkins, it's faced with this, and now it's faced with, you know, the letter that Lynn and Martha did in response to the MBTA contiguous town, I'm not calling it by the right thing, but, you know, that.
Well, it's a whole.
Yeah, and there are only, probably so many parcels to go around, and they're, I'm sure the townspeople are a step away from confusion with all this.
I will say, and this is purely my opinion, that this is not the same kind of project as Perkins Row in one kind of very important way. They have shown, the developers in this case, a real willingness, if not eagerness, to listen to what people want and to work with people in a way that those other developers absolutely have not in any way, shape, or form. That doesn't necessarily mean that we're all supportive of this plan in any way, but in terms of, you know, the restrictions that are put on a community when it comes to a 40B, it maybe not exactly, but it seems, you know, there are a lot of times when a developer could just come in and say, well, you know, you can't stop me, so I'm going to put up what I want, where I want, as long as the state says it okay, says it's okay. And these folks have thus far not been that way. That doesn't mean that, you know, that everything that the town will want or the residents will want will necessarily be realized if this project went through, but they are certainly far more seemingly interested in input than maybe other developers of similar developments might be.
I think one of the items, Cam, that came up, that they agreed with us when we posed it, this group of rental homes will not be accessible to people in Topsfield. They make too much money. Except one, yes, that's right, there you reveal. That someone who is selling their home in town would not meet the threshold to be able to move in. So this is a facility that's going to take in people from all surrounding towns who need lower income housing. It will not be helping young people in Topsfield or people trying to downsize in Topsfield.
Right, so sixty-two plus, lower income are two key criteria there, okay.
Yeah, and they admitted in our dis, and I'm sorry, I had to step out for a moment to maybe chastise a child who's making a lot of noise next door. I think, Lynn, I heard you make the point that this is not likely to benefit, you know, actual residents of Topsfield, not likely, so, but they admitted.
I would just add that I would pretty much agree with everything that Marshall and Lynn has said regarding the temperature of the room. There wasn't a lot of antagonism, I didn't think. Most of the discussion, I think, questions and answers were handled by the butters. I didn't hear a lot of comments from people outside of the area that weren't going to be adjacent to it. So I think it went okay, and by the end of the meeting, I thought that, I thought that things were pretty amiable.
Good, wow.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear a lot of angry, angry people about the process. One other thing I was surprised at, and I will just, it had nothing to do with the conversation at the moment, but Cam, they said that groundbreaking would not take place until at least 2024. And by the time this thing is done, I think they said five or six years, did they not? So, that's kind of the timeline.
They said at least a year to finish construction once they break ground.
Yeah, was, did the, did the planning committee, did Martha or anybody else? I mean, how much of an open forum was this for the planning committee to start throwing out questions, or was it not like that? No, okay.
Yeah, by the way, I'm not sure anybody was there from the planning board, were they? Oh, yeah, Steve Hall, Steve Hall was there, that's right.
Really, it kind of, oh, sorry, let's do my phone.
I was just going to say for Cam, but he left, but I think on a scale of zero to ten pitchforks, it was maybe two and a half or three. But the one thing that did come up, and I think will continue to come up, and something we're going to have to continue to educate folks about is the traffic. And they, they did rightfully say, like, our job is to make sure it doesn't get worse, but we cannot solve the town's traffic problems, and that's my understanding is accurate. But people are going to say, that traffic is terrible, don't put any more cars there. That's not really what they need to do, they need to not put, not make it worse. They need to mitigate anything, and they were talking forty or forty-five cars out of nine thousand was some number that somebody put out, so.
So one of the things that they, regarding the traffic, and I was just going to emphasize that, actually, my point was going to be that the number one sort of takeaway actual thing, because it is preliminary, it was a first glance, this is what they're doing, was traffic, I heard that a number of times for that intersection. There is a Mass Works grant opportunity, though, that we may or may not want to explore in the future, that we can attach this project. Mass Works grants are up to five million dollars, last time I checked. And in essence, you need to have a project that has an impact into the community where basically saddling the developer with a project at the cost would not be feasible. And so, apply for the grant in collaboration with the developer, and the intersection could potentially be looked at for improvements. But that's many steps down the road, and something that, if the traffic study, the professional traffic engineer, and potentially a peer review by the town required, requires it, will tell us what those impacts will look like. But I would just say that the, to kind of, from the perspective I took, you know, it was, it's critically important, these types of projects, that the community knows at a certain point. It would have been premature to bring something earlier, because they didn't have a design, and it would have been so much unknown that it could have kind of, people's imaginations might have, you know, got the better of them. And if they waited any longer, it'd probably have been too late, because obviously the application has gone in. Again, I think the state responding to us as quickly as they did was unusual, and I think that from a timing standpoint, it might have changed a little bit. But they did get out there, as Chair Hook's comments earlier, they did present, which was, I appreciated the fact that they were doing that, because it does allow for the community, at least here, whether they agree with it or not, at least hear what's happening, and be able to sort of judge it, engage it, and be involved. And they did take down a buddy neighbor's who were present's contact information at the end of the meeting, so that they can provide information on a regular basis and have a line of communication, which is, which is a good thing.
And I think it speaks to their willingness to be literally listening and being communicative, so.
One comment about traffic. I live in an area in Topsfield, Gray Hill, as most of you probably know. There are seventy-five units up here, and that's almost twice the number of people or number of units that are going to exist at this place. And I can tell you, when you drive down our driveway to Ipswich Road, traffic is never a problem.
Yeah, I mean, to that, you know, I don't see people coming out of English Commons, I don't see people coming out of Gray Hill, I don't see people coming out onto Washington Street from either of those places. So I don't think that the pure number of vehicles that are going to be going in and out of a theoretical complex here is necessarily the issue, except that you're spinning it out in very close to what is, I think we all agree, just about the worst intersection in the entire free world at this point. That needs, I mean, I don't know what the solution is, but it would be great if someone could look at the solution. And so ultimately, kind of even aside from this development, but if we can use this development to get grant money to at least look at that intersection and see what ideas there may be to fix it. And I know it's a very sensitive topic that a lot of people are going to get worked up, even talking about, but those same people probably, you know, also have the same difficulty making any of the left turns of that intersection than I do. So, you know, having someone look at it, having someone put down on a piece of paper what might be an idea or two, doesn't in fact do anything to change that intersection. So I don't think we should be afraid to at least ask that question.
Well, and just a couple more comments, and we've already beat this thing to death. Coming out of Emerson Field, traffic-wise, is going to be tough at the three or four hour o'clock time of the day when everybody's coming out of the old shoe factory and going back to New Hampshire, or vice versa in the morning. That's a tough time, and you're going to have to sit and wait, for sure, at that point in time. Now, Marshall, one other comment. Some years ago, we did do a fairly significant traffic study about that ugliest intersection in the free world. And there was, it was studied done about a traffic light and about a traffic circle, and all of that was looked at and decided not to pursue either one of those. That doesn't mean we can't do something more creative, but we could resurrect those studies and learn something about them.
Okay, we can resurrect them for free.
Yeah, well, and we can have someone take another look at it, perhaps with those studies already done, for free.
Are you talking about time and money on studies prior to an approval of 40B housing? Is this just in terms of research? This would only be if things started moving fast, yeah?
I think, I think the grant that Kevin's talking about is, it goes together with the development. So if there is no development, there is no grant, there is no study. But if the development is moving forward, then you, I don't know, partner with the developers quite right, but you basically say, hey, the developer's right there, and they're developing something right next to this intersection, so give us some money so we can look at it. Am I correct on that, Kevin?
In essence, yeah, so the traffic study will tell us what the impacts are, and those would, if it kind of puts us over that cliff, that application would be ripe to then submit to the state, the Mass Works grant funding source, assuming it's funded in the next fiscal year or two. And it would, in essence, to some degree, be a public-private partnership, however, it would be spearheaded, my understanding, by the, by the Minnesota, the town of Topsfield.
Cam, just to make it clear, the developer is going to bring in a person to do a traffic study to see exactly what the impact of that development will be, and then based upon that impact, if we choose to go the route of additional study or this grant, you know, is the next step. But they will give us data as to how many cars they expect will be coming in and out, and when, et cetera.
But we're not talking about any Topsfield money or time developed to any of them.
No, okay, okay.
I, if I remember correctly, they had admitted that they had already done a traffic study, but they said if we, if the town wanted another traffic study, they would pay for it.
I don't believe they've done theirs, yeah.
I think, I think they did a, what I'll call informal or preliminary. They haven't done a full-fledged traffic study.
They've retained a consultant who's going to provide that, and I believe they've begun some of their process, but we don't have anything formal from them at this time.
All right, so unless anyone else has anything on Emerson Field, we can move forward. Kevin, per our conversation an hour and ten minutes ago, do we want to flip around these two things and talk about the contract first?
Well, I was able to put together some language on the charter, so either one.
All right.
Is it, are you writing it down, Kevin?
It was updated probably two minutes before the meeting started, to be frank. If it's not on, I'll make sure that it's on in real time.
It's up there.
Yeah, I got it.
Need to refresh it, Lynn.
Yeah, I refreshed it quarter of, but I guess, yeah, it's up there now, okay.
I mean, all right, go ahead, Kevin.
So one of the things that we've been working on is part of the master plan, and getting all of the i's dotted and t's crossed, is what's known as the Master Plan Steering Committee. Martha Morrison, the chair of the planning board, and I have had multiple discussions on the creation of this early, early, early in the process, actually, when we applied for the grants to help us with this. Martha and I met, and she gave me a list of potential groups or individuals that we should consider for such a steering committee. What Martha and I talked about last week is she was going to put some language together on a charter, which I then redlined, you'll see on the document, it's been redlined, so it's Martha's words, Ms. Morrison's words with, in language, with some additions and structural changes to the document to be in line with what our typical committees' charters look like. There's a couple of things that I need to review with her on this document to ensure that she's comfortable with it as well. The goal of this document is that we have something that we feel really great about, all the different groups involved, and that will allow us to have a seamless process with the appointing that will come from it, and the creation of the committee, obviously. What the Master Plan Steering Committee in lay terms will do is we will have a group of anywhere from, say, nine to fourteen people who will be tasked with meeting on a monthly basis, sometimes bimonthly, and sometimes in the evenings for events, where will be a number of steps in the process. Remember, there's four phases to the master plan, based on the consultant that will be using, JM Goldson. And each phase, the steering committee will help produce either documentation or help attract people to the different events, put surveys together, help with the website, different things that we create around the master plan. This group will be a working group, also an advisory group, and help with a lot of the coordination that we need. These are standard in master plan processes, to have a steering committee just like this, and to have a similar makeup to what this committee's looking like. This is a first look for the board. It's also, like I said, had been one conversation with Ms. Morrison on the language, and her and I have not discussed what you see with the red lines, but we have, like I said, there's some bones in there for the, for the, for the review of the select board. So similar to the contract the other night, in a matter of time, being of the essence a little bit, trying to allow the board an opportunity to kind of see what direction we're heading with the charter. Not looking for any, necessarily any edits at this time, until after I speak with Ms. Morrison on it. But if there's anything, ideas, concepts, that the board has either concerns with or ideas to incorporate additional information, that is absolutely welcome. And then, once Ms. Morrison and I have a chance to sort of reconcile the document, we'll bring that back to the select board for the vote, a formal vote of creation, and then eventual appointments of such board, or such committee.
Kevin, what's the timing for this?
It's not as essential as the next item on the agenda, which is the contract for the, for the money and the funding purposes, but the idea would be to hopefully have something, if we can, as early as the twenty-seventh of this, the next regular meeting on Monday, to discuss. If not that, we'll look at the first meeting in July. We want to make sure we get it right, not, we won't rush it, but we've got a good start on the document.
And so, just so we're clear, the document that we're looking at is basically what Ms. Morrison put together in black, and what you have adjusted more or less in blue. I understand that's perhaps a bit of a generalization, but in the simplest terms, this, this seems to be a pretty, you and she appear to be mostly on the same page on what we're looking at, because a lot of what I see is, a lot of times, new Roman. Basically, you were changing fonts, so.
A question for you, Kevin, is the structure. It says that the steering committee shall be selected by the select board. I know there was a question before about who is selecting this committee and who it would report into. Is that, you and Martha are of like mind as to that part of this charter?
So in the essence of time, I put that language in there. I have had a chance to talk with Ms. Morrison about the planning board's creation of the committee and appointment versus the select boards. Our last conversation was last week, where we both agreed that regardless of who appoints, we're going to be working hand in glove, shoulder to shoulder, and we'll put a document forward that everybody's in agreement with. Since that time, and again, I haven't had a chance to update Ms. Morrison, I did have a legal opinion that it is the purview of the select board to create this committee and appoint the committee. So we, we do feel very confident that this is the select board's, under their jurisdiction, and I will further have that conversation with the planning board's chair, but for right now, it's a placeholder until I have that conversation confirmation.
And in the interest of transparency, I asked Kevin to ask KP Law, because basically, I had heard different people say, well, it might be the planning boards, or it might be the select boards, and I said, well, I said two things. Basically, I believe the select board and the planning board in, you know, in reality, will work together, and, you know, we're going to agree on this group of people, regardless. But I wanted, I wanted our lawyers to tell us one way or another, because none of us here are great at reading mass law or reading, you know, all of this stuff. So I asked Kevin to ask KP Law, rather than Kevin's reading it, or Ms. Morrison's reading of it, or somebody's recollection of it, I said, just ask our lawyers. Tell, have them tell us who by mass law gets to do this, or is tasked with doing this. And Kevin sent it to me a little while ago, KP Law determined that it is, falls under the purview of the select board to do that. That said, I feel like that is the rubber stamp that's going to come at the end of a discussion about who's going to be on this board. So ultimately, I don't think anyone's going to be too concerned, because we're not going to put together a slate in front of our board for approval that doesn't effectively, if not formally, have the approval of the planning board as well.
One other question, the traditional elements of the master plan. We've talked about those nine, and those are standard. And then it has additional elements that might be included, and it lists four other areas. In the contract that we're going to talk about next, for the hundred and fifty-five thousand, are those four elements included in that cost?
Yes, if there is any incorporation of those four elements, which at this point are sort of standard within master plans, those would be incorporated within the hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar cost of the contract.
Okay, thanks.
So, and maybe this, you tell me, give me the feedback later, but evidently, those nine have been discussed. I wasn't part of that. To me, you can't have a master plan without talking about sustainability. Um, so, I, I don't know if there's scope to me that sustainability should, well, and fiscal impact, quite honestly, but. Sustainability should be one of those. The, the traditional elements will include, um. Is a little bit confusing, because traditional is backward-looking and will include is forward-looking.
So, the master plan, actually by Mass General Law, has nine elements actually written out. And those are just basically copy and paste from Mass, Mass General Law. Um, what I've seen and what I've talked with different consultants, planners, is that. In today's day and age, sustainability overlaps all of it to a certain degree or has it. And so, it's not tr- traditionally a called-out item within state statute of what a master plan includes. But by default, and in reality, those items around sustainability or hazard mitigation are absolutely gonna be incorporated. I had that conversation with the consultant during the interview process around sustainability and hazard mitigation in particular. And she also, the consultant said, and I didn't have to ask the question, they wanna provide a plan that's fiscally possible. They're not gonna go pie in the sky, they're gonna create a plan that is a feasible plan from a financial standpoint. So those elements that are out there, the additional ones on the charter, are, will be involved, but not in the formal sense of. The nine components of, of what a traditional master plan, comprehensive master plan, which we're doing, would entail.
Kevin, is that in that, the document, the contract, as, as you know, it says the flat one fifty-five. And then any revisions will be based on time and materials at a cost of two hundred dollars an hour. So, I would just wanna make sure it's really clear as to what we're expecting in that contract, so that it does fall within the one hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Yes, absolutely, and it is, it, 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 it's, like I said, it's not called, called out, because it's not a traditional component. But it is something that is standard procedure with master planning.
Can, can we, can we, can we just make it explicit in words, uh, and, and. You know, being on the other side as a consultant myself, if it's not in the scope, there is lots of room for disagreement. If it's not specifically called out.
The RFP did not contain explicitly anything regarding fiscal im- well. In, inadvertently it does, but it doesn't spell out sustainability, climate change, or hazard mitigation. In the, in the RFP itself, and so they resp- based on what they responded on. It, if we wanted to call out something specifically like sustainability and have them do. Uh, further analysis or carve it out as a standalone beyond the traditional nine elements. We would probably, I don't know, have to check, I don't think we'd have to necessarily go out to a new RFP, especially considering the only one responded. But we would doubt, we would probably have to carve out a scope for that particular item if we're gonna do it. Above and beyond the nine traditional elements, and there would, at that point, there would definitely be a cost associated with it if we were gonna do a study on that. Hazard mitigation, we just did hazard mitigation plan, um, for example, so we have that data and that information within the last twelve months. Available, it was a, I think a twelve-month process that Chief Collins Brown championed with a number of town employees. So that's basically very easy, we'll already have it to, to, to apply towards it. Um, sustainability, there's traditional sustainability measures that we could talk about, um, within the report. One of the things that'll happen is during the, um, the public forums and the surveys, the data that's driven from that. And from what I've heard from this community at town meeting and just in conversation, there is a significant component of the community that. Would like to see a lot of efforts made under sustainability in town. Those will be part of the broader master plan, we'll, we'll flesh that out, but we can direct that too within the categories. Um, but if we carve down a specific one, it would be an additional cost.
So, if I'm reading it correctly, you're saying sustainability will be covered, this language is stock language, we can get it done. And without additional cost.
So, a sustainability plan could in a, in and of itself be a separate plan that the town. Provide, ask the consultant to help us with that. You, and you're well aware, I know Ms. McDonald, um, we probably, with this, it's not necessarily. This isn't that, but if we don't have a sustainability plan, which we don't. The consultant will incorporate best practices and discussion points around sustainability, build that into the master plan. And I could have, absolutely can have a further conversation with Jen Goldson and, and say. I wanna know explicitly exactly what you're gonna do for us around sustainability. Like I said, during the interview process, we did touch on that. We touched about what we've worked on, and she talked about some of the things that Chief Dean, and how it can be incorporated, you know, at a certain level. Not as granular as, as the nine elements per se, but within those nine elements, sustainability will be captured. Um, fiscal impacts, of course, will be captured. So I, I, if you like, as an action item, I can go back to, and ask specifically on sustainability. Uh, maybe get her to write an email or something that's to the effect of what the sustainability, how incorporated, if you like.
I don't think, I mean, I think to Rafael's point, he's gonna say, yeah, an email is one thing, but if it's not written into the statement of work. There's room for avoiding that. Avoiding that work.
I can, if you'd like, I'll go back to, to Jen and ask her if she will.
Well, may I make a quick suggestion? Because it sounds like what we're talking about right now is actually the contract and not this, this is the charter. Correct me if I'm wrong, the thing that you all are, are actually addressing is the contract, which is the next item, unless the charter is somehow part of the contract.
What I, what I would say though, while we're on this sustainability, fiscal impact, climate, as mitigation within the charter. The steering committee has a lot of sort of pull, they steer, so if we, as they're going through and navigating the process. It's important to have these in there as other elements that are overarching around all the nine elements, they, they, they impact all the nine. So, I would, and this is from Ms. Morrison, her language, I would hundred and ten percent back that component of the charter. Um, because I think that's exactly what the intent is from the consultant and our intent from the town's perspective.
Kevin, I would think that fiscal impact wouldn't be an additional element that could be included. I would think fiscal impact is a component similar to what you said with sustainability, it's in each and every one. Of those components, especially the implementation plans. I mean, you'd wanna know. What is it going to cost and what is it going to give us to help make decisions about which road we're going down, so. Is that the case with the fiscal, that it, that's going to be incorporated? I, that's a big component.
Yeah, so, I mean, they'll, they'll create the plan. And within that plan, they'll talk about strategies and recommendations and how the fiscal impacts would look like if we pursued it or not. And so, the same way, if they make a recommendation under housing. And within that, they talk about what the sustainability components of that or the fiscal impacts of that new growth, things, the things we talked about during the budget part.
And, and if I, if I can interrupt, I mean, just looking at the, the first word literally in the bullet points is goals, right? We define what the goals are, those items in the additional elements could certainly be part of our goals, you know? We want sustainable housing, sustainable land use, sustainable natural resources, sus- sustainable economic development, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
And I get that this is the charter, not the contract, that, that's a very good point, but it says might be included, which means they don't need to be.
Yep. I mean, is there any reason that the charter can't say will be included? That's a legitimate question, not a, uh, not a you should do it.
I think they all, yes, I think they all will regardless, but we can change it to. Uh, additional elements that will be included, our fiscal impact, and, and I'd also emphasize that these as. As pulling these out and identifying these as sort of the overarching pieces of the conversation for each of them. It's the steering committee's purview and their responsibility to make sure that we tackle each of these as they discuss all nine elements, right? So, even if Jen's not doing a deep, deep, deep dive and doing a full sustainability plan. You know, if we appoint someone who's from the Sustainability Advisory Committee to the Master Plan Committee, they're gonna have that lens of. You know, what are the sustainability impacts of the recommendations coming out and challenge the consultant on it and maybe come up with other ideas put on the table, so. Um.
Maybe changing the wording there, Kevin, instead of additional elements, the above nine elements will incorporate. Fiscal impact, sustainability, climate change, you know, it doesn't have to do a deep dive and be its own standalone. But each of those areas should be addressing those, so you could say, the above nine will incorporate. And then list those four.
I mean, cause that makes sense, because the things above are different than those things below, right? Those are actual concrete kind of, you know, what is our open space, what is our housing, what are our public, et cetera. And then these, uh, and I think somebody's already said that these other four things are basically an overlay on top of that. Because, as I said a moment ago, sustainability kind of goes into most of those. I don't know if we have, you know, sustainability of our histor- historic resources, but. Most of those bullet points could have a sustainable aspect to them. So I, I, if, if I may summarize, I feel like the, the biggest issue ultimately is the might be. Part of that sentence rather than will be, or however you wanna phrase that.
When I, I'll not, I will not make the change yet, I will bring that up to Ms. Morrison if that's okay, when we sit down. Next, and then we'll come to a conclusion together, if that's all right.
I mean, don't we wanna use sustainability with a little more, you know, care and fine-tuning than throwing it in front of everything? I mean, I think, I think there's a right way to use it and we're just gonna. It's gonna lose its punch if, if it's sustainable public facilities and services.
Well, that's why I'm saying, it doesn't go in front of everything, but it, it is a part of a lot of those different things, right? And so if it were its own bullet point, like up in with the nine. I, I just don't think it fits thematically the same way. It's more something that, as we look at those nine things. We always need to consider fiscally what we can do is whatever we're coming up with sustainable. Like, so it's, I'm not by any means saying it goes with every one of those things.
Yeah.
I'm more saying it is an overarching thing that we will consider as we look at anything in there.
That's why I suggested the, the wording, that the above nine categories will evaluate and consider fiscal impacts, sustainability, blah, blah, blah. In some cases, you evaluate it, you say it doesn't really make a difference here, or we can't address that early on, or, you know. Each one will be different, each of those nine categories will be impacted differently and will have different concerns.
Madam, Madam Vice Chair, if you'd like to send me that, that sounded really good. You wanted to send me that language, I'll, I'll keep it.
Why we record these meetings?
Dick, could you send that?
Well, I'll just go to Dick's YouTube channel and we're done.
Okay.
I will say, as an aside, the number of times when I was looking over the, uh, minutes. I would go to Dick's, uh, YouTube channel, because that was easier to navigate than, uh, than our cable video on demand.
Well, then we, we should fix our cable video on.
Yeah, that's a whole separate conversation, don't try to. Um, okay, uh, I feel like we've hit the, hit that hard enough. Is there any other aspect of the charter that we wanna discuss right now? You disappeared there, Lynn.
Can't hear you, Lynn.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, timing-wise, will the charter be coming back for review and a vote on the twenty-seventh of February?
It would be great if we have a chance to meet prior, and if we do, absolutely, um. I just, I just know timing and, um, yeah, we'll do, make all efforts to try to get together on our schedule so we can talk through it. And hopefully we get to a place where, where it's in a good pla- it's in a good, it's in a good place.
So I feel like if, if I heard correctly, it'll either be the twenty-seventh or latest, that our next meeting in July.
That's correct.
One of the next two meetings, we would have this.
Yes, absolutely.
Alright then, anyone else on, uh, on the charter? Very good, I'm going to exit out of that and, uh, turn our lonely eyes to the contract.
So, um, the initial intent for today's meeting was to primarily to discuss, um. Our contract, our master plan contract, there's a number of documents on board docs. The, after our meeting, we sent out to the board, the, the version as well as the K P Law. K P Law provided feedback a couple hours ago, um, they reviewed the document, and their version of the document is up there. Um, that one is, um, uh, incorporates, it's the, incorporates. A number of things that were identified, um, primarily from Mr. McDonald, um, also some, some other additional language that they wanted to include. Nothing that changed the, the, the document itself, uh, in it, in its content per se of, of what we're, what document represents. Um, what I would also mention though is we attached into, we're gonna incor- incorporate a second attachment. So the attachment A, which is the response from the contractor, uh, in this case, J M Goldstein. And we'll also have, um, the master plan RFP and attachment B. Um, this, that's our initial document that went out on the street, so we have that covered as well. Incorporating a number of changes from Mr. McDonald, um, I added the change from. Uh, from Mr. Brown, and I know, um, Ms. Ramirez, you had a couple of questions, which I believe the document. Um, hopefully addresses that, but if it doesn't, we can talk through that as well. So, for today's purposes, timeline-wise, um, I have been communicating with the state. They're aware of our, where we are in our processes. I spoke with, uh, Jen Goldson from J M Goldson today, I gave her an update as well. Um, they're ready to, to, to take it and, and, and move it, she told me a day or two. Probably tops on her end, so we have a little bit of time, which is good, um, and appreciated. Um, but I wanna just leave it open for any types, any discussion, the last version that's up here, the one at the bottom, it says. Draft, uh, Tops Master Plan Consultant, J M Goldson, Contract Draft Six Fifteen Twenty-Two, K P. Six Twenty-One Twenty-Two with KH edits, that version incorporates, um, the select boards, uh. Edits that I received as well.
So, before we, uh, enter into, uh, discussion on this, I would ask Kevin, uh, in kind of short form. I know that sometimes that, that, that's not your, uh, that's not your strong point. Uh, of all of the edits that we received from different select board members and K P Law. Are there any that you would, uh, qualify as substantive or are they more, uh, housekeeping? If, if I can put them into those two kinds of categories.
All the edits I've, I've, I've opinioned are housekeeping edits from both K P Law, um.
Don't worry Lynn, I'm gonna ask you next.
And from the, from the board members.
Okay, and so then I would ask of the people who submitted the edits if you disagree or have something more you wanna discuss that's more of a substantive nature.
Um, yeah, I would say my concern is still in the document, and if K P feels like it's not an issue. Then, you know, I'll, I'll, um, I'll back off and, and let them, their expertise, uh, prevail. But when it says fee for services, it says consultant's total fee will be a hundred and fifty-five thousand. Including re- reimbursable expenses, and then it goes on to refer to these as consultants shall not exceed these amounts. Which confuses me, it's, the amount is a hundred and fifty-five thousand, period. So when it says these amounts and said fees, blah, 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 so to me, it's still not clear. I think not to exceed one fifty-five inclusive of all reimbursable expenses. It just, I think it's still, um, vague. And then further down, I'm just, um, actually, it might have been on the attachment A. Um, it was the issue of, um, revisions. It says they will prepare additional revisions on a time and material basis. So just to clarify what revisions might mean. So, let's say there's a document, there are, it looks like there are four primary deliverables that come in. And if it comes in, we say, well, I don't think that was really clear, or this wasn't included, et cetera. Any kind of input that we give, is that considered a revision that then is time and materials over the original fee? And we can take them separately, the first one is just that one fifty-five, because they do talk a lot about revisions and additional hourly fees. So that one fifty-five does not seem like a hard number to me the way it's worded and numbered.
So it, it, it's tough to sort of word it in a way that allows the flexibility in the event that we wanna do. If we're diving sustainability or extra revision, so the way that, what we've attached into attachment A is the, um. uh, the proposal itself, which lays out the one fifty-five, and then it talks about the additional revisions that you mentioned, Madam Vice Chair, of, um, what the time and materials would cost us to continue to do that. I think if the, if the board says Kev can't spend more than a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, which is my intent, we won't spend over a hundred and fifty-five dollars and we'll take whatever we receive as it is received and hopefully we're able to get a good document. Now, my understanding is that those, the hourly rate is based on additional work beyond what the scope of work entails. And then if you look at the detail of the scope of work from the consultant provided us on the different pieces of what they'll work on, phase one, phase two, phase three, uh, phase four. Ultimately, the, the deliverables, a draft master plan for community review, revised draft master plan for community review, a revised and a final master plan and action plan for adaption. So basically they'll give us a draft, we have time to then review it and get community impact, input, the planning board, et cetera. And then redline it presumably and send it back. They'll incorporate those edits and then they'll give us a final document. At that point, if we say, oh, by the way, we forgot this or we changed our mind, they would charge us two hundred, a hundred and seventy-five or a hundred and fifty dollars, depending on who on their team's doing work. Um, and that's same for phase three and the deliverables and phase two and the deliverables, phase one. So what you see under those, under page twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four of the response, it's providing us very specific items that are, that they'll be responsible for. Anything above that is where we'll exceed the one fifty-five. The way it's worded in the language of the contract, it gives us the ability to, contracts are one fifty-five. But if we decide we want a second revision or a third revision or a deeper dive on sustainability, whatever, um, we do still have the flexibility within the contract that exists to allow us to do so.
I, I would feel more comfortable instead of revisions because that's, that's vague because we are doing a lot of revisions through the process. I, I would look at it more like a change of scope.
Yeah.
That we would have a different time and material with a change of scope.
And that's when you fight is, hey, we asked you to do this thing. Is it in scope? Is it not, not in scope? If it's in scope, we should be getting a deliverable that we're satisfied with regardless of how many revisions it takes us to get there.
So specifically in the contract, can you just point me to the, what it, what, um, suggested language changes we would, we would propose for that?
It's actually in attachment A, uh, the wording that they put in to their RFP. And it says, um, let me pull it up here down at the bottom. Uh, we will bill a flat fee, a hundred and fifty-five thousand. Um, we are available to attend additional meetings or prepare additional revisions on a time and materials basis at falling rates. So prepare additional revisions. That's the part that's vague for me. It's like the, the team, the steering committee working with them, come up with the document. And then it goes to whoever they're reporting to and says, this is what the deliverable looks like. And if we say, well, th- this was overlooked or whatever it might be, is that a revision? Does that go into time and material or is that part of the feedback process in which it leads me back to, I prefer that it says if there's a, a change in scope, there will be time and material.
So this was part of their proposal. It's, it's atypical to have them revise their proposal.
We could put it in our contract, but that's the wording that has me concerned because attachment A is part of the contract. So if we put words in our contract up above to say one fifty-five is the flat fee, time and material for a change of scope.
But I don't think that's going to achieve what they're trying to prevent, which is basically us giving them revision and then another revision and say, we want you to tweak this, you know, we changed our mind on that. That's why they put the language in the way they have because it, it allows for revisions until a final document's completed. They just don't, I, my, I guess, I haven't asked a specific question, is that as a consultant, if they are keep asking to move the needle, move, or move the, uh, the goalpost, move the goalpost, they're just gonna add up hours and that's why this comes into play. They can say, all right, timeout. You've come back to me ten times, Kev.
Well, maybe then from a procedural perspective, before we get to that final document, make sure that that document is shared with whoever the reporting structure is so that they have input before that final document is created. And then if we, you know.
And that's the steering committee. That's why we're putting, we'll put some really great people in there to make sure that they have a look at it and they bring it back to planning, bring it back to the select board before they finalize anything that, um, that moves or get voted off.
So the steering committee would report out to somebody before that becomes final version to avoid revisions that cost additional money.
Yeah, they, they will not have, that's why we're trying to have somebody on staff or a consultant who is the facilitator between the consultant and the town and the steering committee. And so that they are gonna, because there'll be a group of volunteers, mostly there'll be some town employees, like we're member two, planning board member two. But there'll be some members of the community. It'll be, it'll be on the responsibility of that facilitator and that's why it's critically important to have somebody in that role to ensure that that person actually takes the document and circulates it on behalf of the steering committee after they've looked at it. And that everybody's comfortable with the document, document as presented before it then gets sent back to Goldson saying, this is final edits, here to go, draw it up.
I mean, as long as we get a chance to, to comment on it. Cause I, 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 I agree with Lynn, just the attend additional meetings. It's not just additional revisions, it's additional meetings when they haven't defined how many meetings we're gonna have in the first place. And I, and I fully get that the spirit of it is we're gonna do however many we need to, to give you this thing.
Every, everyone in this call does contracts. It just, we know the deliverables have to be more clear. The scope has to be more clear. I, I think that's, we're all in agreement on that.
Are you in agreement with that, Kevin?
I would guess I would need to be, I'm not.
You're right, the proposal can't change, but the contract we're writing now can be amended to, amended, to get the language right. So we can, we can still do that without worrying about, you know, what's been presented to you on May twenty-fourth. That's fine, as is, it is what it is. But based on their language, Lynn's, Lynn's right to call out more specificity in our language.
So do you want us to put in there the exact number of meeting? I mean, I guess I'm just not, I can't.
I guess when they gave us a quote of one fifty-five, then they had to, that, that had to come from a certain amount of hours they had planned on, a certain amount of meetings they had planned on, et cetera.
That's right.
They didn't just back into your budget. So we just need to see, we just need visibility to that.
So they've projected a hundred and eighty-six hours from, um, from Jan Goldson under phase one, two hundred and twenty-three to phase two, two hundred and sixty-three in phase three, one sixty-four in phase four. Cambridge Analytic Economics, which is one of the consultants, they'll be doing some subwork on this project. They estimate forty-three in phase one, eleven in phase two, forty in phase three, thirteen in phase four. And they give the total of, of a cumulative for each phase and a total for the entirety of nine hundred and forty-two hours. Um, that's where the one fifty-five come, comes from.
But we don't know what that translates to us, Kevin. That could be, they have a certain number of background hours they have to do for research and their own meetings. So does that translate into three meetings with us per phase? Plus one presentation to each of the, um, the boards, the select board and the planning board. When we were doing this, um, master plan, so to speak, the little revitalization plan for, uh, downtown, MAPC stipulated that, that this would include, you know, a monthly meeting plus a presentation to the board plus, so that we knew what we were receiving. This is, you know, a hundred and eighty-four hours. I don't know how many of those are with us and how many meetings that translates into. Um, I think just being as clear as possible upfront solves, you know, a lot of headaches down the road uh, as to what the expectations were on either side.
So it says in phase one, the first phase of our team will compile the existing conditions for each element into a summary report, including an inventory of existing land use and maps illustrating the current conditions of the built and natural environment and resident demographics. Phase one will also include the first community forum as a public kickoff to the master plan project with interactive activities to encourage community discussion regarding issues and opportunities. Phase two, I, I mean, I don't necessarily want to read everything, but that lists out.
What page are you on, Kevin? Sorry?
Page twenty-one and now, um, on to twenty-two. It says community engagement is particularly critical in phase. Consultants will work very closely with the town staff and master plan committee to implement an effective and flexible outreach and engagement plan that caters to the current circumstances and capabilities of, uh, captures a broad cross-section of community. The proposal includes creative, uh, diversified approach to, uh, engagement that includes a variety of tools such as pop-up tables at community events, meetings in a box, DIY kit, roadshow working sessions with board committees, community-wide survey, sorry, uh, participatory online mapping tool and an interactive project webpage to elevate the project's visibility, encourage community conversation and share information.
So could, could we go to phase one, just out of that that you read, Kevin? I saw it's a kickoff meeting, the master planning committee, that's one. And there is a, uh, stakeholder, uh, let's see, what is this? Um, I'm frustrated with that. There's like a meeting with the community, a, a, a community forum. So those are two meetings.
So what they're gonna do is they're basically gonna make sure they stay within the ballpark of the hours, right? So if we ask them to go to this event, they'll go to this event. If we ask them to that event, they'll go to that event. If we ask them to the strawberry festival, we ask them to the holiday degree, they'll have the flexibility to do multiple community-wide, but then they're gonna say, Kev, listen, we're creeping up on our, on our hours. We're projecting out this. We still have phase three and phase four. How many, you have like two more events, Kev? And we'll say, okay. And then we'll say, we'll pick the last two if that's what we choose. But for where we are in the process, it's hard for us to say definitively that the strawberry festival is more important than the, the flower expo to have a pop-up tent, right? So it's, it's creating opportunities that allows us to direct them into places where they're best suited to get the most wide participation. And that also includes online presence. They'll create a webpage for us that will basically be attached to our web, our website. So we can direct people to that when it comes to just the master plan and it's about in and of itself. So I guess, like, I guess my question is, is, you know, they've laid out specifically exactly like phase two and phase one a little bit and same for three and four, what they'll be delivering. If we ask for twenty events, they're probably gonna say, yeah, it's gonna cost you X amount more money than you have budgeted and the cost will be this now. And then we'll value engineer back down. It's just that the, at this point in the contract, it's hard to say you'll be at this event, this event, this event between these hours and, you know, this, this how many hours from now to this event.
I'm, I'm happier with that word additional, reading through the detailed scope, which I did not have a chance to look at before.
Okay, Kevin, oh, go ahead, Russell.
We might be able to solve it if, instead of using the word additional, we say things that are not currently in scope as described in this document.
I, I'm, I'm gonna push back on that and just say, I, Kevin, I'm not trying to be difficult. I just don't think, think there are a lot of specifics in this document. And, and maybe you're arguing that there can't be at this point, but I, I'm, I'm, I would just be really concerned about creep in the way it stands right now and us getting tagged a lot more times. I'm sorry, I, I know that's a pain in the butt to hear, but, um, I, I'm just, it's, it seems to me to be a general document, not a specific document.
So I've looked at a number of master plans, applications in my past experience. This is absolutely part of the course, what to expect at this point in the problem. Um, you know, there needs to be some level of flexibility to be able to not tie us to things and then have to ask them to do other. Cause we can find ourselves doing the opposite if we make it so tight that we then have no flexibility to prioritize something else with their time. Uh, and that, that can be prohibitive. I know what the ultimate concern is that we're gonna be spending more than a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. I get that. Um, I mean, if we can't, if that's the number and it is the number, then that's the number. Um, we just have to be smart, working closely with them to make sure they don't go over the hours. But they believe, they propose that the first four elements and those specifics I listed a few minutes ago, within those four elements will cost a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. That's the scope. I, if we, if somebody wants to suggest more detailed language, by all means, now you can send it to KP and to Jen and get their feedback on it. Um, I just, I just, this is kind of what I've experienced in my career. Doesn't mean, this, this, my, that's what I know. Um, so if there's.
But you, you've looked at more of these than I have. So if those comments are beyond what is expected in something like this, I'll, I'll defer to you.
You can also vote no, right?
Yeah. Certainly, yeah.
So let me just, uh, because I feel like we've gotten a little in the weeds here. What is, I think Kevin, you probably took a shot at defining, what is the big picture concern? Is it that we'll end up needing to pay more to these people than this contract says? Or is it that we'll pay the hundred and fifty-five and get to the end and not get what we want? Or is that just basically saying the same thing two different ways?
They can't go over one fifty-five.
Without, without our, not without our okay, no. But so with that, with that in mind, I'm just trying to get a sense of where, I, I mean, I get, I get trying to, to craft a, a document that protects us and gets us what I want, but I'm just trying to get in, you know, common parlance here amongst us. What is, what is the concern that this current contract would leave us liable to? I think it's one of those things that we would need to spend more to get what we want or that we're gonna get to the end of this and not have what we want. Which again, is just another way of saying then to get there, we have to spend more. Is, is that the concern ultimately?
My concern was in item two, that it wasn't clear that we cap at one fifty-five. Um, because it says including reimbursable expenses. And then it goes on to say said fees, said amounts, et cetera. So to me, it wasn't clear that one fifty-five was the cap. Further down, now that attachment A has been provided, it does say it's a flat fee of one fifty-five. So I guess that takes care of that. The other, the other piece though was the revisions and it just, um, my, was my general concern about what is entailed in revisions because the process is very vague at this point. And so I didn't want time and materials to start to build up. I think if we go outside of scope, that was my concern, that that's when you start to ring up the time and materials. We can work together on making sure that when we put each of these phases together, if we say we want a meeting at the beginning and the meeting at the end to enable all comments to be in there before the final document is produced, we can have that conversation early on, I guess, so that we don't have any misconceptions. But I, I really wouldn't want to start to ring up any costs other than if we went outside of our scope and we changed our mind and said, no, we would now like you to look at these three additional things that we didn't talk about before. So revisions just seem so vague to me. But if everybody's fine with it, um.
And I'm not here to pressure anyone to be fine with it. I want you to, you know, if, if you're not fine with it, then I, I just feel like at some point I lost the string of what the, what the, what the end result concern was, if, if that makes sense. That what at the end would, would, would be our problem if we sign this contract with it theoretically vague language now.
My, my, my hope, not my hope. Every step of this process for the master plan, it's gonna be its effort and everyone, I want to make sure everybody's on board and comfortable. And I appreciate getting into the level that we have to make sure that everyone has a clear understanding and a comfort level. If there is not a comfort level, anyone on the board would like to reflect and maybe share language or questions that I, I or KP Law or if I had a planner, I'd ask them, they'd answer the question. I'd ever find somebody who can help us, um, to answer professionally, you know, what it means. We can table a vote until the twenty-seventh. Um, it's more important to me, even though it's tight, it's more important that the board feels good about this, comfortable with it, understands it. And then all questions, whether it's today or over the course of next week, are answered and that we move forward as one. Um, and so I just say that on the record for what, what. I just say that on the record for what, what.
So it, here's what I would then suggest, because we do, it gets tight, but we can. And I know that, uh, Kevin and I discussed this earlier, we can put off a vote until the twenty-seventh. The discussion tonight was going to be if people are comfortable voting on this, then we'll vote on it. Uh, even if you now said to me you are, I don't feel, I don't feel comfortable with your comfort. And by you, I mean the, the greater you. So I would suggest that we in fact wait till the twenty-seventh, mull it over, have a one-on-one with Kevin, whatever it takes. Uh, you know, talk to me, talk to each other, as long as it's only two of you at a time. Um, I want to make sure that everyone, uh, just like Kevin just said, is comfortable with this contract. This is a huge, huge deal for us, both in terms of the amount of cash that we're talking about. Even though a big chunk of it comes from a grant, it's money that we have to spend. And I want to make sure we spend it in a way that people are comfortable with. And I want to make sure people are comfortable with the contract that we're ultimately signing. So I would suggest we not vote on this tonight and that people mull it over, read it over. If there's language you want to talk about, if you just want to talk about the idea or say, hey, Kevin, talk me through how this process has worked for you. And whatever it may be, take the time to do that. We have that time. We don't have a lot of it, but we have enough of it. That, that I think it's okay for people to, to mull on this a little bit more. I know that often this board is called on to, to make votes on documents that we haven't necessarily had for a long time. And I don't want tonight to be one of those, so.
Marshall, thank you. Kevin, did KP respond?
Can't hear you, Lynn. Can't hear you, Lynn.
I don't know why that's working. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, um, did KP respond to my suggestion to just not make the fees and the amounts plural in number two? Make it singular.
They did not have an, your, your, your questions, um, Madam Vice Chair. It was, I sent them the document that we looked at on Thursday night, whenever it was we had it last. The last meeting we had, I sent it to them and they had a deadline of twelve o'clock today. Received it a little bit after that and did not have a chance to go back with any of the edits from the board. Most of the edits, like I said, were capitalizing a T or putting the word the or losing an A in an A. Sorry, Mr. McDonald. But the, uh.
That would be my request, Kevin, if you could check with them, because if we say the fee is a hundred and fifty-five thousand. Then there's no reason to make all future references plural, because it makes it sound like there are other expenses that are incorporated. Should say consultants shall not feed this amount without prior authorization. Said fee shall cover all services. It's one amount, one fifty-five. So I don't know why it's plural. That's what was throwing me in item two. It makes it sounds like, um, reimbursable expenses are another piece that put together up with fees and amounts.
So consultants shall not exceed this amount without prior written authorization from the town. Is that fine?
Yeah. And then said fee, not plural, not fees, it's one, it's a fee. They said it's a flat fee that they're charging us, so said fee shall cover all services provided by consultant. And then later down in the, um, attachment, it says if we change our mind or expand our scope revisions, then they charge us. But this is the fee, one fifty-five. That was my recommendation for item two.
I'll ask, I, 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 I see exactly, Madam Vice Chair, what, what you're seeing. I, I, and I don't disagree. I just, my only question is that then limiting us from? Because the additional.
Spending more if we so choose.
It, not that I'm suggesting we will or we should, but if we go over by a hundred dollars. Does that then, and it's essential a hundred dollars. I don't know why it's a hundred, but let's say it's a hundred. Does that, um, prohibit us by changing that link?
That would be the question you can ask KP, I would say.
But it's in attachment A, so that's, I think it's around about, yeah, I'll, I'll ask.
Okay. All right, anything, uh, else specific? And again, I encourage you to have one-on-ones if you need them, uh, or want them, or just mull on it. And then we'll, uh, be in a place where we can vote on this on the twenty-seventh.
Kevin, are you around tomorrow morning? Do you have any, do you have any availability tomorrow morning?
Uh, Mr. Brown, I will make availability.
You want to do first thing? Is there, you know, whenever you want that to be?
Eight fifteen?
What, you can go as early as you want, doesn't matter to me. If, if you want to do eight fifteen, that's fine too.
Eight fifteen is fine on my end.
I'll be, I'll be at your office at eight fifteen.
Okay, sounds good.
Lynn, uh, has texted me, she has disappeared. So I've let her know she's no longer here. But, uh, I expect her rearrival at any moment.
We're going to pass the hat for a new computer for her pretty soon.
Well, what I have learned, uh, is if I have kids, the family room is right there. That has a whole video gaming system. And if there's a kid who sits down in there in the middle of my meeting and starts, you know, tapping away, that's when you all start to freeze and stutter, so.
Is there, it just because time is of the essence. I know, uh, Mr. Brown, we'll, we'll talk tomorrow. I know I've got some feedback now from, um, Madam Vice Chair. Um, Mr. McDonald, is there anything on your end, questions or language outside of what you sent me? Over the weekend that you want to discuss to get to a comfort level?
No, but if, I, I, I will take the time. I hadn't read through appendix A yet, so, but.
Most of the, this language is stock language for what it's worth, the contract that you have. And it reverts back to attachment A to sort of be, that's where the real need of this, for the purpose.
Exactly.
Right. Um, Mr. Share, anything?
There are no specifics for me. Uh, I am just more interested in, uh, members being comfortable with it, so. I will have some comments within a day or two.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
All right, uh, Lynn said, don't wait for her to get back if we feel like we have nothing else. Is there anything else from anyone else, uh, at this time? Oh, Lynn is back.
Sorry, I didn't know if I froze or you all froze.
The odds.
I know, the odds are not going the other way.
Yeah, well done, well done, Rafi. I, I know this. Uh, in fact, now that.
Yeah, they're just saying.
Now that you're back Lynn, you, uh, you're welcome to make a motion.
Oh, uh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, any discussion on the motion to adjourn, seeing none, uh, Mr. McDonald?
Hi.
Mr. Brown?
Hi.
Mr. Jackson?
Hi.
Ms. Bermudez?
Hi.
And Mr. Hookus and I, we are adjourned.